Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Common Council of the City of Huntington for April ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Prior to the beginning of the business meeting, we'll have an invocation led by Pastor Zach Working from Hope Rising Congregation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Kristi McAlany. Those who wish to participate may rise at this time. Pastor Working?
Let's pray. Father, we give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for these individuals who give their time to serve this community. Pray that you would give them wisdom and sermon as they seek to serve this community the best that they can. Father, continue to bless them. In Jesus' name that we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And with that, we will call the business meeting to order, beginning with a roll call.
Brodigam.
Here.
Chapman is remote. Felton.
Present.
Funk. Johnson.
Present.
Pike is absent. Renssberger.
Present.
Thank you. First item on the updated agenda is minutes from the previous meeting of March twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four. Is there a motion to bring the minutes to the floor for consideration and adoption?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion and consideration of the minutes from the Not hearing any at this time, we'll call the question in favor of adoption of the minutes as submitted. Kristi?
Chapman.
Yes.
Funk. Johnson.
Yes.
Renssberger.
Yes.
Brodigam.
Yes.
Chapman, yes.
Reminder, Councilman Chapman, per state and local ordinance, we do need you to keep the camera engaged as well as the microphone to participate in the meeting. Next item on the agenda is reports from committees, boards, or commissions. Charlie, do you have any updates for the council?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Dwight?
No.
Welcome to council. PJ?
Nothing to report today.
Todd?
Yeah, we're gonna go over a little bit more when Mark gets up here, but there were, for HQ, there was two projects completed worth about three point four million this year, or last year, I'm sorry. And we had an audit today presented by Bill Miller, and it was, everything checked out, so it was accepted. And we have six more potential clients looking at River Fork West area, so things are going well in that area.
Thank you, Todd. Any questions for Todd? Andrew?
Yeah, Lime City, we got to be hosted by Fusion Chemical here in Huntington on Joe Street, right behind BIP State Bank South. And I'm not gonna steal fire from what's later on on the agenda, but we did get a tour of their facility. They're looking to grow in Huntington, they're looking to expand their business into like a brand, and I think that they'll be a good business here in Huntington for a long time.
Thank you. Dave?
It's coming, it comes on C-24 on new business. It did pass the Plan Commission unanimously, so, and I'm sure Bren has something to say about it a little bit.
Thank you. And Lilly, I know you'll be addressing us later on, but do you have anything to add in addition to that? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion or, and/or appointment of a member to serve from, on council's behalf, to the Redevelopment Commission following Joe Blumicki. With that, is there a motion to open discussion and consideration?
So moved.
There's motion and second. So council will be reminded this time that it is an appointment to the RDC for council to make, whether it's of your own membership on your behalf, or if there's a member of the public at large you wish to appoint. Director Keppler, I don't know if there are specific additional requirements other than residency within the city. Am I missing anything else there? Okay. So if there's nominations from within the body of council itself, or you've given consideration to it, now would be a time for open discussion around the matter.
I talked to Paul, I know he's not here today, but Paul Pike about this, and he's been on seat at for a long, long time, and so he would be more than happy to give up his seat at, so Dwight can be on the board also, and then join the Redevelopment Commission. So depending on what you guys think about it, I would like to nominate Paul Pike to be on that board. I like having two council members on it because it's, I mean, the things we go over, has a lot to do with the, you know, things we do normally to the city. So we've got other, actually it's a full board now, we have all, all the other members except for two councilmen and everybody else, so there's quite a few people on it from the city that aren't elected. So depends on what you guys think, but I think Paul would be a good addition to the...
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. We have a second on that motion.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion on the motion at hand.
Can we make another nomination?
Sure.
Andrew expressed interest.
Point of order, probably need to withdraw that motion before open discussion if you want to open up a nominating slate.
Do you want to talk about more? It's like withdrawal.
As far as point of order for it before moving on, since we have a motion on a nomination, draw that motion to discuss other nominations, or we need to act on that nomination? Clear it one way or the other. Yeah. So withdrawing it would keep it alive for consideration.
I'd like to withdraw my nomination then, so if you guys want to talk more about it, we're more happy to.
Andrew, we can't, only two of us can talk at one time, so we couldn't discuss anything.
Sorry.
Him and I discussing it, he would like to get off the Lime City board and take this board that we're talking about. He thinks that would fit him more, being in the banking business. We would give, he wanted maybe Dwight to, you know, take that position at Lime City.
Dwight, are you staying in your position on Board of Works? And then do you have a preference on what committee that you would want to be on that would match your skill sets or your, just your preferences?
I don't care. Doesn't matter to me.
That's nice.
He's a five-tool player.
Or no tools.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I think I would serve the RDC well. I would be willing to stay on Lime City as well, if needed, but also, like, if Dwight needs an appointment or what, I don't mind giving him anything that council agrees.
I think everybody, at least if they have a chance, should be on the council. So you're going somewhere, Dwight, we don't know yet.
Yeah. I anticipated that, thanks.
Andrew, the, the meetings do recur, occur at typically at ten o'clock on a Friday. Is that something that's conducive to your work schedule?
That'd be fine.
Okay. Todd, do you know in your discussions with Paul, is that something that works for his schedule?
I talked about when the meetings were. You were with us, Bren, when we were talking about it, was, did he say he had any problem with making it at ten? Okay. You were, okay. That's a very good question, I don't have an answer to. It's safer to...
May, may I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Could, maybe we could table it until Paul is able to speak for himself at another meeting? Because I remember him talking about wanting to serve in another capacity, and he brought up RDC, but I'm not sure if Lime City might not work out. I, I don't know. I, I don't want to speak for him, and if we could table it to the next meeting, then Paul might be able to participate in the conversation.
Is that a motion, Councilman Chapman?
Yes.
Second. Motion and second to table further discussion and consideration of the motion at hand? Not hearing any, we'll call the question in favor of tabling the appointment to the RDC until a subsequent meeting where all parties can be available to discuss. Kristi?
Felton.
Yes.
Funk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Renssberger.
Yes.
Brodigam.
Yes.
Chapman.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, we have a guest with us today, Director of Huntington County United Community Development with a Metropolitan Award presentation, Director Mark Wickersham.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. Dwight, welcome.
Thank you.
We're looking forward to working together, and it's an exciting time for council as well. Before the meeting began, I put a copy of our two thousand and twenty-three annual report at each place setting. Yes, it's good information, yes, you've probably seen it before, but the thing that struck me was that the photograph has Joe Blumicki looking over our shoulder, front and center, and some, I think he probably is continuing to look over our shoulder from somewhere, and it just was so neat that, over my tenure, that I knew that, and even before, Joe had worked so hard with HQ and Lime City on things like land acquisition, research committee, options, we had an options committee that Joe chaired for quite a while. It just was really, I think, moving and wonderful that Joe got to see the ribbon cut at Progress Drive, and I know he was really proud of that, and we are always honored by his service on that. But as you see from last year inside, we had another nine projects in two thousand and twenty-three, those clients invested seventy-one point four-nine million dollars in our community. That's coming off of a year in two thousand and twenty-two, where we set an all-time record at two hundred and thirty-four million. So the progress continues. We've now facilitated, as of the end of two thousand and twenty-three, one hundred and seventy-nine projects have invested seven hundred and seventy-three million dollars in Huntington County. And as Councilman Johnson said earlier, we have two new ones that have just finished their work as well, so that's now one hundred and eighty-one clients and projects that have decided that Huntington's a great place to invest and live and work and so forth. And it's just really a tribute to the team spirit that we have at all levels of government in the community, whether those are elected officials or appointees and various roles for planning and admitting and so forth. With everyone working together, it's no wonder that Site Selection Magazine is a trade publication for economic developers throughout the country, and each year, Site Selection evaluates and ranks in order of excellence and productivity and performance. They evaluate each state, and they rank the states in order. They evaluate metropolitan areas, rank them in order, and they rank small market communities like Huntington County under the banner of a micro-political effort. And for the eighth year in my tenure, we've been recognized in the top one hundred, but this past year, we jumped to number sixteen in the nation, which puts us out of five hundred and twenty agencies of our kind, we were ranked sixteenth in the nation. I'd like to say we were number one, so would Purdue, but we'll take sixteen. That puts us in the top three percent of performers, projects, excellence, and again, performance and return on investment as an organization. And as a result, and with Eric Fawcett, our board chair here tonight, we would like to present to the city a framed copy of the cover sheet and the list of the people that we follow, and we could all maybe pose for photographs if we do that.
Councilmembers, Kristi? Thank you, Mark. Next item on the agenda, we have Lilly Poling, Lilly Poling addressing the council with the State of the Youth address, and so I'll invite you to the center podium at this time, And if you, actually, if you want to go ahead and lead off and reintroduce yourselves to council, everyone, these are members of that Viking Thing at Huntington North, which is a joint venture between the mayor's office and Huntington North for our youth advisory council.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Max Sorbruck, I'm the vice president of That Viking Thing. Here alongside Lilly Poling, the president, and Ella Newton, the secretary. This year, Mayor Strick put together a group of Huntington North High School juniors, who include Gabby Betterly, Hayden Bailey, Kinsey Cobbs, Isaac Grog, Luke Runyon, Marissa Trout, McKenna Landrum, Maya Wolf, and Sarah Chris, who are all a part of That Viking Thing. Mayor Strick put this group of students together to learn about the functions of our city and how we as a youth can make a difference. In two thousand and nineteen, the first, the first strand of coronavirus was found in Asia. About five months later, the world shut down. March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, could be considered the worst and scariest day this world has seen in recent years. Every generation suffered and grew in unique ways. Many youths like ourselves were and are in a critical stage of development by trying to identify who we are in this world. Navigating the world during its tumultuous time and gaining a true sense of self without conventional means of personal exploration was difficult, but we learned to adapt quickly. Over time, since March thirteenth of two thousand and twenty, we as a youth have not only endured but persevered, proving to ourselves and every other generation that we can and will succeed as future leaders. Throughout this experience of That Viking Thing, we have learned how city government works, what we as a youth can do to better our community. In addition, we gained other valuable life skills. Mike Hart, Mike Hart, excuse me, Hartburg taught us about Robert's Rule of Orders. Mike Raleigh presented on public speaking. Brooks Feder showed us how to really love our community, and Mayor Strick led and empowered us throughout all. We also had a chance to learn from other youth in our community. Through a survey we sent to high school students, we were able to gain some valuable perspective. Some of the questions asked were, what is Huntington doing well for our youth? Or could Huntington be doing better for our youth? Is the state of Huntington having a direct impact on your life? If so, in a positive or negative way? And what is something underrated about Huntington?
The survey results indicated that the city of Huntington is doing many things well, such as offering easy access to things that people are interested in and want to get involved in, bringing more attractions and activities to the community, and helping available to everyone, whether they're succeeding or they're not. Multiple respondents also praised the Boys and Girls Club. One commented, "They help with tutoring local students along with having fun events to foster community and interpersonal skills within our youth." There were some suggested areas of improvement for our city as well, comments like having more confidence in our youth and needing programs for older students to mitigate vulnerabilities and high-risk behavior. Students also expressed a great concern over the drug problem in our schools and the school's response to this problem. They also expressed a desire for their prioritization of mental health. As far as events go, students indicate that there are in fact multiple programs and events to get involved in, but oftentimes there isn't much advertising for these, which then results in lower turnout. We believe that if there was more effective marketing for these events, the students would get more involved. Some aspects of Huntington that our youth love are the trails and camping areas. The city has provided us with many beautiful places and nature that the community can experience. Features of Huntington that youth, the youth love and think should be more appreciated are the drive-in movie theater downtown Huntington, specifically the fifth stores and boutiques, sporting events such as at the high school, the police athletic league, Huntington County baseball, and Camp Hero. Each of these noted features share a commonality. They provide a sense of entertainment, and they're also a sense of community for the youth in our community. One of the goals of That Viking Thing is to actively improve our community. To do this, we came up with two different initiatives. One, the hygiene exchange, which is spearheaded by our corporation nurse, Meg Friesen. This proposal invites students struggling or understanding to access the proper usage of hygiene products, the chance to acquire them via the Huntington North High School Clinic or the school library. After assembling the items, we will place them at the high school. If the products are received well and used appropriately, we will expand the program into the middle school. The library at H and H S is already stocked and ready to go. Secondly, we are working on the alleyway activation. This initiative seeks to improve the look and functionality of one in Huntington's alleyways. We have chosen to transform the alleyway between East Market Street and Franklin Street, specifically the area behind the UB block or across the courthouse. We plan to add lighting, student artwork, and other items into this alley to make it a space that students and community members can utilize and enjoy in otherwise useless areas. Thank you for joining us today. We have learned a lot during the two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-four run of the mayor's council. We are honored to be the inaugural group and can't wait to see what future groups will do with That Viking Thing. It has been an incredible learning opportunity that will continue to be a powerful platform for youth to voice concerns, share ideas, and work towards solutions in our community. We are committed to using our collective passion, energy, and commitment to create a forward movement. Let this experience with That Viking Thing serve as a reminder that we have the capacity to shape our future. With continued engagement and collaboration, and the occasional help from adults, we can create a community that is reflective of our values and aspirations. We have enjoyed this empowerment opportunity and are committed to positively impacting our shared Huntington community. And if any of the councilmembers have any questions, you can go ahead and ask.
Councilmembers?
So what, the library stocked with sanitary, like hand sanitizer and those types of things, or?
Yeah, like hygiene products, like shampoo, body washes.
Oh, okay, okay.
Like, like toothpaste, deterants for like students who aren't able to access them.
I'd just like to say you guys, all three, did a very good job of presenting. So I know you were nervous getting in front of people like us, but it's very much appreciated that, you know, your input and everything means a lot to us. I'm sure that's why the mayor put it together in the first place, to have young people giving their input, because, I mean, even a lot of people in town don't think the council ever listens to them, so, in, in the city sometimes. So it's nice that you have that input, and nice job doing the presentations.
Other questions or comments from councilmembers? Max, Ella, Lilly, thank you again for the presentation this evening, and for the others who contributed to pulling together the information. We do have several of them with us that will probably be continuing through the rest of the meeting, so I'd encourage council to meet the students afterwards. And again, thank you for your participation in That Viking Thing this, this semester. Next item on the agenda is actually very timely in light of that State of the Youth address, and primarily the emphasis on downtown. So we have Director Keppler here to introduce guests that have been working with Huntington residents over the past year on a Huntington Destination Downtown Master Plan. They will be presenting the results of this year-long process to council this evening. So Director Keppler, if you would like to introduce our guests this evening.
Certainly, thank you. Let me get this set up, and we'll get going. There it is. All right, thank you, Mayor. With me tonight are representatives from Taylor Seifert William Design Group, specifically Brett Willman and Scott Seifer, and they've been working behind the scenes with many of the residents of Huntington, business owners, citizens, the whole gamut, over the last couple of months. We started this process last fall, as the mayor indicated, and many of you have been kept apprised of and even participated in the downtown master plan. And so this specialized area plan is finally coming to an end, and so we've got a final document, and Scott's gonna present to you tonight on the background, how we went through the planning process, and what we were able to glean from the citizens. Because at the end of the day, that's what this document is. It is a plan of the community. It's not the mayor's plan, it's not my plan, it's not the Plan Commission's plan, it's the community's plan. And so Scott will also talk about the great response that we had from the citizens and the various methods in which we outreach with them, and, and were able to get input both in person and remotely and over the internet and things like that. And so ultimately, he's gonna present this to you tonight. You guys have got kind of a highlight there, the actual plan document, which he has is, is quite sizable, and so we'll have that available online tomorrow, along with this presentation. And certainly ask questions, have comments or concerns, bring them up. The plan from the city is that probably at your next council meeting, after everybody's had a chance to digest this and reflect, and pending any revisions or questions or anything that we need to go back, we'll ultimately bring back a resolution for council to adopt. And so by council adopting that plan, it'll add a little bit of validity to that plan as a, as a guiding document that's been officially recognized by the city. So without further ado, Scott?
All right, great, thank you. I'm instructed that the clicker is the mouse, so we'll use this, but maybe stand this direction so I can kind of follow along a bit on the visual presentation. So the screen's in front of you, as well as the, the large screen, I'm gonna be taking you on a journey, if you will, of the, the master plan documents. So that way, when you get a chance to review the material, you have this fabulous orientation to what's all in and documented with the, the process and, and the recommendations. So fundamentally, this evening, I do want to just provide that orientation to you, so there's no action, certainly, it's, it's, this is all just information sharing. Just wanted to make sure that, I know collectively, many of you in the room were able to participate in one form or another throughout the planning process, and that certainly is appreciated. But it's good to kind of give a, if an overview in terms of looking back from where we were, where we started, what our process was, moving into a little bit of the plan overview, which literally will be, we've taken some snapshot pages from the report or the document, and we'll, we'll highlight a few of those as we walk through that, and then end a little bit more with, as Bren mentioned, kind of the implementation moving forward. So real briefly, we began, as he, as he mentioned, about a year ago, we did look, we were talking, we were coming to the meeting here this evening, our first steering committee meeting was in June of last year. So we obviously did a little background kind of kickoff and organizational things prior to that, but collaboratively in terms of the, the community conversations, that, that beginning kickoff meeting with the steering committee last June began the, the process. And we've really kind of divided it into sort of four major phases of work. The first one was really documenting and understanding the, the downtown, the, the conditions, the, the demographics, and what have you, the service area of downtown in relation to the larger Huntington community. Then we moved into a more concentrated area of input and community collaboration and community conversation. That was then followed by synthesizing that, that input into the sort of strategic planning, so kind of putting some meat to the bones, if you will, in terms of what we have been hearing, in terms of ideas and, and concepts or, or thoughts. And then kind of structuring that into a, a blueprint or an implementation strategies of how you move that forward. The, kind of the blue line there, that ribbon, although there was a concentrated community vision, visioning component as part of the process, that, that did continue throughout the entire process, and if you will, was a ribbon that really tied all of the, the different phases together. So we always were meeting with the, the steering committee, or coming back out to the, the public in a variety of... in a variety of methodology tool ways that we could get some sort of feedback or comment to. So that really tied the whole process together with that back and forth dialogue. Real briefly, our kind of the plan overview, when we kind of look at it, when you get a chance to begin to kind of orient yourself to the Destination Downtown Master Plan, we again organized it into a series of sections that document the process, the recommendations, the action steps, et cetera. And we do begin with sort of the plan background, so we kind of orient you in terms of some acknowledgements of the participants that were on the steering committee. I believe there was roughly a 13-member steering committee that we met with regularly. And then we, you can see in terms of the documentation of the T O C, the table of contents, we've organized the plan document itself in terms of kind of a summary of the background of the initiative and the process. Since we did spend a lot of time, and it is the community's plan, we wanted to make sure we documented the community engagement and the tools that we used for that. That then moves into the plan recommendations, and then we summarize that in the implementation section. And then if you're really interested in some of the nitty-gritty in terms of, for instance, some of the community surveys, we have all of those kind of things included in the appendices that you can look at, that's more kind of the detail versus sort of the snapshot that we used in the sort of the summary of the plan section itself. The study area, if you will, sort of the downtown centric area, and it's bounded, my eyes are going to fail me on that without looking here. So we're bounded on the north side, we have Tipton Street on the north, Etten and Riverside Drive on the south, Guilford to the east, and Poplar Street to the west, so just a little bit south of the river, and then kind of the downtown core. Clearly, we understand that when you talk about downtown specifically, transportation or other kind of things are connected, and obviously there's some land uses that kind of weave beyond sort of that study boundary area. But that gave us a little concentrated effort, if you will, in terms of sort of the focus of our work to sort of be able to make sure we had some sort of clear direction in terms of the area focus throughout the study and the conversation. One of the things in terms of our existing conditions documentation that we did was we wanted to get a baseline in terms of kind of the snapshot of the Huntington community, also sort of the health and vibrancy of downtown specifically. And we did that in a couple of different ways. On our sort of our demographic analysis and our look at our planning context, we went through utilizing the kind of the last two American Community Survey census data and other available resources for some analysis of existing conditions related to population, demographics, those sorts of things. We also looked at sort of the existing conditions, like the physical bricks and mortar things that we could go out, survey, and document. And so all of that is summarized as part of the existing conditions plan background section, and so you can see there topics like sort of on the community economic profile. We looked at things like the business environment or the business climate, the employment climate, commuting habits of the residents. And so some of this information is, again, community-wide instead of downtown-specific because in terms of sort of the detail of the census doesn't necessarily jive with the boundaries of our study area, but it does give us a good balance in terms of understanding from a community standpoint, some of the broader community or planning context. In addition to sort of the analysis for Huntington specifically, we also wanted to kind of see, engage, well, where are you as a community as compared to perhaps some peer communities or peer cities, as well as the state of Indiana? And so you'll note that that documentation in terms of some of that snapshot information is also there. We selected some communities based on maybe some similar demographic or population size, perhaps the community had a higher education institution or facility located in it, perhaps it was geographically one of your, if you will, competing peer communities. So if you're talking about economic development or business or residential growth, some of those that you may be regionally on the market competing with. And so that just gave us a little bit of, again, a better understanding in terms of when you're looking at yourself, it's sort of one thing, and then when we look at it as compared to maybe others, how are they doing and where are you at in that, if you will, larger context? So we did that with sort of that economic profile. We looked at that from a, just a sort of a community snapshot, so basically thinking about your age, statistics, your education attainment levels, et cetera. We looked at your housing, so your rooftops, right, in terms of your existing number of residential units, household income, number of rented or vacant type households, those sorts of things. In addition then to the sort of that demographic statistical analysis, we also went out and did a lot of sort of that physical, if you will, inventory. So we looked at a series of elements in terms of sort of those existing physical conditions, and for each of those topic areas, we've created sort of a snapshot summary in this sort of this given point in time, where you're at in terms of these particular topics, and also documented that through a series of graphics and maps. So you can see your existing downtown land use. We went around and updated sort of that based on, you know, the commercial, institutional, public, open space, et cetera. Your existing zoning in terms of some things are documented in terms of some of their current zoning classifications and where those are at. So your automobile safety, we looked at in the downtown study area where you had some of the accidents or impacts in terms of things that may call out, are there some needed safety improvements in the downtown that need to be addressed? And so that perhaps is something that we wanted to look at, and so we understood that better. Same thing with the transportation and understanding in terms of kind of the community flow in and out of and around downtown. Parking, I think in our steering committee discussions, right, parking, it didn't matter what the topic of our discussions were, probably parking was part of the discussion at every single session at one point or another. And so we certainly, we recognized that there was already some analysis of the sort of the existing parking inventory downtown, and we just wanted to build on sort of our understanding of what those availability and usage rates typically were. Same thing with the sidewalks. Brett, I think, one maybe late summer afternoon after we began the plan last year, we had kind of created a criteria list in terms of a conditions rating, and he went around and we documented, you know, so is the sidewalk in good, fair, poor, conditions based on, you know, is there, so for instance, roots that are coming in the sidewalk that's making it uneven, or are there accessibility things that are lacking or what have you? So we were able to then kind of document based on those definitions of those categories, sort of your existing sidewalk downtown conditions. Similarly, we did the same thing with what we called underutilized property, combination of perhaps both lots that maybe were either vacant or underutilized and/or maybe some structures that perhaps maybe didn't, you know, didn't have any use in them at all or were underutilized in terms of an occupancy. We also did a urban tree canopy documentation, so your street trees over a certain caliber were documented, so we created sort of, you know, where you have some of those microclimate or shade areas, what have you. So that was all part of all of that existing conditions inventory as well. So between the demographic analysis and all that existing physical inventory, we were establishing kind of a good snapshot of where we were sort of in this point of time. And then we certainly wanted to begin to expand upon our community dialogue and our community conversation. And as part of our community engagement strategy, we had a variety of methods that we reached out to, and I'll go through a few highlights of those, but you can kind of see the snapshot there on the right of the slides or the screen in terms of kind of the level of participation. You know, we had over 300 community members engaged in one point or another in the process. So they were participants in some of our open house periods or survey work, what have you. And we had a variety of opportunities in which the residents could provide their feedback and comments. First and foremost, as I mentioned, the steering committee, this was a group that met regularly. It was made up of nonrepresentatives from the city, local business owners, faith-based groups, we had a youth representative, we had the community foundation, and several others that provided some, if you will, point of contact and gut check for us as we were kind of going through the process. And so they met regularly, and we obviously had different sort of topics that we were covering throughout the process as we kind of went through sort of the series, and they provided, and they've all obviously had a chance to kind of give us some feedback and thought and the recommendations that have led to the plan today that we're talking about. Broader community engagement included two different community workshops at the, the name change, Pathfinders, Pathfinder, Entrepreneurial Center. So we had really some fantastic, if you will, space that they accommodated for us, and we set both of these workshops up as sort of gallery type of evenings. We had, the public came through and could provide a variety of comments or feedback, and I know several of you participated in one or both of those. The first one and more, that first phase of the project was more visioning and big idea creation, and so we had a series of prompts and exercises that we asked residents and interested parties to give us some thoughts, feedback, and big ideas on. The second workshop held late this winter, early spring, that one was more on the recommendations, and so the community had a chance to kind of go through the recommendations that are in the plan, kind of react to those, provide some prioritization thoughts or ideas in terms of like of these ideas that are created and summarized. We think these are key for the community, and so that was sort of the topic or the focus of that second public workshop. In addition, we recognized that not everybody necessarily comes to a meeting, right, comes to a workshop or a public forum event. So we also had a fairly robust public online presence, and that online presence again provided a different tool, but ways in which they could respond to kind of the same things that we were talking about in the open houses and workshops. And so in the beginning, the online presence, we have a, and it still exists, and the document will be on the project website, so we created a specific website dedicated to the project, and so all of kind of the sort of the meeting materials and what have you are available on the project website. The beginning phases of the project are online engagement, more with, we had an interactive map, we had some other sticky dot kind of maps and those kind of things. So in essence, it was a recreation of our workshop material but online, and so the public could provide those sorts of feedback or comments that way as well. We also had an online survey that went out as part of that online engagement tool at that point as well, and there's a snapshot on the right-hand side of the screen there of kind of the, sort of the map that was the digital map during the time that the online engagement for that portion was live, and you can see how people could leave their dot and make a comment or what have you about a specific geographic area or certain kind of issue in the downtown or whatnot. We also then wanted to take the meeting to people, and so the way to do that was we fashioned what we called the mobile display, and shout out to Kevin, who was kind of our champion for packing this up and taking it to a variety of places. It toured the sort of some of the community areas and the downtown areas for about a month and a half, two months or so throughout this sort of engagement section. And again, it was another way that if you weren't coming to a meeting, or if you weren't necessarily going online, the meeting came to you via this mobile display, and you could leave your comments or feedbacks, and you can kind of see some of the questions and responses that people were able to leave or comment on as part of this particular outreach tool. And then I mentioned the input survey. We did do two of these. We did one during the beginning big idea phase, and then we also did a survey that was an online survey at the recommendation phase that launched at the open house of our second workshop, and so that online engagement also occurred. And then in addition, we did a specific business owner survey, so the kind of the online survey, if you will, was broad, community-based, and then we know that there were perhaps some better understanding regarding if you were maybe a business or property owner, how to use your property, like what time are your hours of business, how do your deliveries come and go, what have you? So that specific business owner survey allowed us to collect some data that was more specific-oriented to the business and property owners beyond just sort of the broad community input surveys as well. So gathering kind of everything that we heard, and by the time all of that implement, or input was collected, you can imagine there was a whole bunch of different ideas, right? Hundreds of different little sticky notes, different dots on maps in terms of people's issues or concerns, and then we had to weigh that against sort of the existing, obviously, physical and demographic conditions that we had looked at. And we began to sort of form, okay, when we start to think about all these great sort of ideas or initiatives or recommendations, how do we sort of organize that into a logical and reasonable manner? And so the recommendations section of the plan began, as any good plan does, where we tried to articulate a broad arching vision statement and then build on that. And so we understand that, you know, for downtown Huntington, we want it to be a vibrant district that is welcoming to all, being the focal point of the community, provide a mix of housing, employment, gathering, and civic uses, together creating a downtown district that has a unique identity and serves as the heart of Huntington. So as sort of that broad mission statement, organizing some of our strategic plan objectives and action steps underneath that, always trying to be mindful of that mission statement, like any good business or organization or even individual, you know, owner, right? You always like have a sort of a mission that you're trying to accomplish. And so this allowed us to have that sort of gut check in terms of making sure that we always went back to that sort of heart of Huntington theme. In terms of sort of our recommendations categories, we created sort of five broad conceptual categories that when we sort of did our sticky notes, we kind of were able to lump, if you will, or categorize things into like-minded sort of areas or like-minded kind of topics. And so for us, we developed these sort of series of five, if you will, broad goals, development, connectivity, destinations, vitality, and administration, and began to then structure specific objectives and action steps under each one of those. And so the development goal really deals with, in terms of investment in downtown, certainly some bricks and mortar types of activities, making sure that it's diverse and accessible in terms of exchange of goods and services to residents and visitors. The connectivity goal really again speaks to some of those transportation issues, some of those multimodal pedestrian type of issues, and making sure that they are safe, accessible for that entire range of, you know, transportation, whether it's you're in a car, whether you're a pedestrian, whether you're a cyclist, whether you're a casual greenway user, what have you. Those are certainly things that all kind of fell into that connectivity category. As I'm flipping through here, you can see on this particular spread that you can see that what we heard, we tried to reinforce, again, some of the comments that we were hearing to each of the topics in terms of the suggestions or the comments that served to support the particular goal statement. So again, reinforcing that it's a community-driven initiative, and these are some of the thoughts coming directly from those conversations and those feedback tools that we had spent a lot of time in documenting. The third goal really focuses on destinations, and if you think about the heart of Huntington, talking about increasing and promoting the sort of the natural resources, so the riverfront and open space throughout downtown, and perhaps maybe that's an area that hasn't traditionally been maybe focused on as much, but is a resource and an attribute that everyone kind of kept talking about. So talking about, you know, really those quality destinational type of attractions and spaces in downtown was sort of really the focus of the third goal statement. And then items number four and five, those goal statements shifted a little bit away from kind of the bricks and mortar type physical projects or built initiatives into more of some programmatic or policy-related things. Because again, in order to make downtown function, it's not just, you know, servicing accessible sidewalks, but it's also making sure you have strong policies to promote the engagement activities or, you know, kind of the development of those types of initiatives. So the vitality goal talks about, again, sort of community-focused events and programming. So we had a lot of discussion and thought there in terms of everything from how gateways perhaps could be enhanced to branding and messaging. So again, a non-bricks-and-mortar, but certainly a communication in terms of how the downtown is presented from a variety of communication tools. And then finally, on the administration side, really this one again is much more on the policy-focused. So an idea, we mentioned on the existing conditions as one example, we looked at the existing zoning, you know, if there are things that we're trying to do downtown in terms of You know, if there are things that we're trying to do downtown in terms of some mixed-use encouragement, we want to make sure that any of our policy recommendations don't prohibit something that is something that you're trying to achieve, right? So things like your regulations, any maybe incentive programs that may be of, of resource or interest to provide some of that, that flexibility to encourage some development or program or what have you. All of those recommendations are included in that administration section. So that was all then woven into kind of our implementation section. And so obviously, there are some graphics or that kind of things that hopefully give a flavor of a potential. So nothing is a, this is obviously what you're going to go out and build or do tomorrow, but it gives you an idea in terms of maybe the flavor of, of kind of what, what could be in terms of some of those big ideas or thoughts. And then for the implementation section, we, we talked and wanted to identify, obviously, it's not just the city alone. We recognize that there are a lot of partners that help move ideas, recommendations, and initiatives forward. So that was, that was discussed and is identified in the plan. And then we took each of the, the five goal categories and all of the activities related to those, and we have an implementation matrix for each one of those. And you can see it articulates sort of what the, in this case, this is the development and the connectivity on the, on the right, the development on the left. So all of the sort of the, the specific goals for each one of those. And I think this is also in your, the little summary packet that you received, just as a, a snapshot. It highlights what the, sort of the, the objective is or the action item is. It highlights kind of in a, in a, in a high level, sort of is this an immediate timeframe or maybe a longer-term thing? And then from a, from an investment or resource level in terms of a, sort of a smaller resource needed to something that's more substantial in terms of resource needed. And then the, sort of the priority, if there are some things that move forward, you know, sort of priority-type projects, what those, you know, checked off in terms of focused ones might be. So that is identified for each of the five categories. So here again, we have destinations and vitality is, is sort of two that are highlighted there. And then our final one, the administration category. So they're all presented the same in terms of, you know, kind of the recommendations, but obviously they're, they're the suitable ones for whatever their respective category, category is. The appendix, as I mentioned, includes a couple of things. One, it includes as of sort of February, March of, of this year, there are, there are different tools and programs, maybe, you know, state or federal, those kind of things that do kind of come and go on occasion. As of kind of this late winter, we kind of went through and gave kind of a snapshot in terms of funding programs, other resources, whether they were through the state or local, those kinds of things that are available in terms of that may be applicable to some of the recommendations and, and again, how some of those could be leveraged to move some of the, the projects or ideas forward. In addition then, as I mentioned, if you're really interested in all of the, kind of the little graphs and, and bar kind of summaries of, or bar chart summaries of kind of the community input from the, you know, the surveys or some of the mobile display, what have you, that, that is included also as part of the appendices. And then, you know, I think then the idea of then kind of moving forward and thinking about as a community, kind of all of these ideas and, and kind of moving this, this forward, obviously, kind of this body and, and kind of the, sort of the endorsement, if you will, of, of recognizing kind of the effort that the community has put forth the last ten or so dedicated months in, in putting the plan together is, is certainly a, if you will, an initial step of kind of the, the moving kind of the projects forward or the initiatives forward. And I would say that if you had kind of a thematic key takeaway from each of sort of the five areas, obviously there's the specific projects under each one of those, or recommendations under each one of those, but I think, you know, underneath the sort of the development is the idea of, there's a recognize that it's a unique area to begin with. And so the focusing of reinforcing sort of the development and/or redevelopment of some of the, the areas to kind of enhance that as a unique district is, is critical. Connectivity, there's already, I think, a lot of kudos to what the city and the community has done in terms of connectivity, not only in the downtown, but obviously in the, in the broader community context. But the idea of again, engagement along the river, other kind of things in terms of bringing that connectivity a step further, I think, is something that's a key takeaway. The destination, certainly the river. We were not at one meeting, whether it was a public session or a stakeholder session, where the river in some form or fashion did not come up. So that, that would be sort of a key takeaway in that, in that group. Sort of the vitality, I think the idea of branding, there was a bit of maybe fuzziness, I think, probably in terms of kind of what is sort of the messaging or what is your image when we talk about downtown and what that is. And so there are obviously other, other programmatic kind of things. Your festivals and events are, I think, certainly a high priority, but kind of again, putting that all under sort of one banner, if you will, in terms of kind of that messaging was a key takeaway. And then on the administration side, obviously there's just kind of a check on some of those policies and even some things that are, that are new. We talked about, and it's in here, a variety of things that even, you know, recently came up in terms of some options that perhaps would be applicable to downtown, that may all, may come back to the community for discussion, whether it's a, sort of the outdoor refreshment area or other kind of concepts. So thinking about those as a policy standpoint, and is that something as a community we would like to maybe look at, would probably be a key takeaway in terms of sort of those policy or, or administration type of, of, of objectives or, or statements. So moving forward, obviously we kind of have our timeline of what we've been working on. And the yellow now is kind of this transition part where the implementation, which is really the hard work, right? That's the, the hard work of kind of moving some of these forward. I do know that hopefully this, this plan is being useful as grants, as we speak, are being developed, that this can help to support. Because again, when you can talk about, you know, community's conversation is all documented here, and we've talked about these things, and use that as a resource to, to leverage other investment or programmatic type of investment, that's certainly a, a tool that you can use this for and, and something that hopefully will be very vital and, and useful in the, kind of the years moving forward. We also would suggest as you kind of go through some implementation cycle, just like with your comprehensive plan or other sort of strategic neighborhood plans, what have you, that there is a check-in, right? Like if this just sits on the shelf and it's not sort of reviewed, you know, every year or every other year, what have you. We always talk about like doing a report card a little bit and just kind of checking in on, on where you're at with some of these things. Because I think that allows for any plan to be sort of a living, breathing type of initiative rather than something that's just static and, and sits on the shelf. And so that would also be part of, I think, sort of the implementation check-in moving forward here as well. So that is, is sort of the high-level summary of the, kind of the plan, the process, the conversations that led to the development and the organization of, of the material in the, in the actual master plan report itself. So I, I would commend the, the community and the, the city for taking on the, the initiative and the idea of kind of the community-led process that was, I think, upfront first and foremost throughout the entire process, I think, is, is also very commendable. So something to be very proud.
Scott, Brett, thank you for your efforts and your assistance to our community and coming up with this master plan and the summary this evening. Before I open up just generally to council members that may have questions or follow-up comments, I do want to especially recognize Councilman Felton, Felton, who was on the steering committee for this. And PJ, I don't know if you have any initial thoughts or comments you'd like to share with the, the community.
I'd just like to add that you guys did an amazing job on this from day one, just seeing all the progress and seeing how many thi- uh, how many people have been involved in it and the progress of where we're at today is amazing. So commend you guys for that.
Thank you. Broader thoughts and questions from council members this evening? There's a lot to digest in there, so.
So.
Always a good step.
Yeah, as the mayor said, there's a lot to digest, and you got a very high-level overview primarily of the process that we went in. And so the, the thing that Scott's trying to impress upon you tonight is just the amount of sheer feedback and input that we got from the community. And I, I led with that and I'll finish off with that. And so in the back of your packet, and again, I will email you guys a link tomorrow when we get it updated, but this is the meat and potatoes of the document, the individual strategies and recommendations, if you will. And as Scott outlined, there's timeframes in there, there's low-hanging fruit dollar signs, high-hanging fruit dollar signs, whether it's a one and done and ongoing. And as, as Scott sort of talked about, some of the things in here may never come to fruition. It may not be in the cards, the situation might change. This is a plan. It's not set in stone. It allows us to pivot as a community. There may be other opportunities that come along that aren't in here that are wins for the community that we do follow up on or implement. A lot of them are capital cost, a lot of them are in the, in the hands of the private market, and the city doesn't have a direct role in. And so what we're going to do is we will do like we do with the comprehensive plan. And as Scott suggested, Dave, you know, we talked about this plan commission the other night, it's a year for a five-year update for the comprehensive plan. We don't do plans and put them on the shelves and not look at them and not reference them. We work the plan. And so we're going to continue that strategy with this particular document. So again, as you guys go forward from tonight, look through this, look through the links that I'll send you. If you have questions, direct them to me. I'll either direct them on to the team at TSW or provide feedback to you individually. And then we'll look at our next council meeting to come back with the resolution, if everybody's good with it, and, and formally adopt this plan. Because as Scott signed and talked about, there's community partners already that are ready to use this as a guiding document for some of their grant proposals to bring tens and hundreds and millions of dollars to this community.
So recognizing the, the work ahead to review and digest the materials, I would request a, a motion from council to thank the team at TSW for their assistance to us in this and to formally receive the master plan so that you can digest it and we can discuss it at future meetings.
So moved.
Second up.
So we've got a motion and second. Again, we just appreciate the effort and work TSW and the community provided on this and pulling this together. And so with that, any further discussion or consideration of the motion to receive and review going forward?
Thank you for your hard work on this. It's a big undertaking. Brett, I'm assuming, you know, you're one of the few, if not the only, department has to review this document so far? So on the steering committee representing the city as a, as an entity, the mayor, PJ, myself, and Adam all had seats at the table. We've all reviewed this document, as Scott indicated. There were religious leaders in the community, business owners, everyday citizens, strategic partners, everybody had that, everybody's had a chance to do that. At our last steering committee meeting, we poured through this and probably much to, to Scott and Brett's frustration is we did some, some changes at the last minute on how that matrix looks like because we thought it would improve the overall end product. But no, I'm not the only one. Lots of, lots of us have, have looked at it. And, and the steering committee feels confident with what's been presented today? Good. Thanks.
Further commoner question, Jermaine, to the motion? Not hearing any this time, we'll call the question in favor of a motion to formally thank TSW for their assistance to the community and to receive the plan as presented for council's review and digestion. Christie?
Funk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Brenzberger.
Yes.
Rodigam.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Felton.
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. And again, thank you Scott and Brett for joining us this evening and for your work over the last year. We appreciated it. Next item on the agenda, we do have a petition or comment from a, a resident. And so at this time, I want to invite Mr. Matt Shoda to approach the podium. And please state your name and address for the benefit of council. And you have three minutes to share your, share your concern with the council members. Thanks for being here.
My name is Matthew Shoda, 66 Green Hill Court, District Five, Precinct Five-A. I'm going to try to rush through this due to time. So if you need me to slow down or go back over something, please let me know. So the last meeting went through Resolution Three-R24, which was the redoing the Calumet Capital Fund. Some information was given during that, that meeting that I found may be different. I couldn't find anything that, that correlated what we were told. The amount stated at the time that the current amount was two and a quarter cents per hundred dollars of home value, and that it would increase to five cents per hundred of, of home value. I found that the current amount is actually a 1.38 cents per hundred. The median home value in Huntington was 170,000 in 2023. At one and 1.38 cents per hundred, that's an average of $23.46 per home. The average increase in value is 6.3%, which would bring the average home value in 2024 to 81,000, which at five cents per hundred would bring the average home sales or home tax for the Calumet Capital Fund to $90.50. That's an increase of $67.04 per home. This may not seem like a significant number, but the average family right now who are struggling just to pay the bills, provide food on the table, this small number could make a big difference. I know that the resolution is already passed and the council has made the decision. The real reason I wanted to speak to you today was on the order of events that happened at the last council. The public was asked to speak prior to any reading of what was being proposed, which me- I, I had no idea what the Calumet Capital Fund was, how much it was, what that entailed, what it affected. So I had no bearing on how to comment at the public hearing. What I would like to petition to the council is a potential change of rules. I don't, I don't know exactly how, how that works for the council. That would be for the Mr. Hartburg winning. For anything that would involve increasing a tax or putting another burden on citizen Huntington, whether it be on a resolution or ordinance, but I know specifically for a resolution, it only requires one reading. To implement maybe doing the first reading, having discussion, and then opening up a public hearing in order for the public to have more knowledge before speaking, and then calling the motion of whether to be in favor or not. That's pretty much all I had to say on it. If you have any questions, me, happy to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Shoda. And before I open up to the wider council, one, I want to thank you for your comments today. I also want to apologize at the previous meeting, because I know for myself personally, I wasn't as well-prepared as I need to be for that meeting. And there's a couple of items that I want to make sure that you're aware of and the general public is as well as we look at this. And our clerk treasurer, Christie, did a great job of presenting this last time. And one of the key items that was maybe overlooked in the key of this was that this is still subject to the state constitution property tax caps. And so it will not constitute an increase on individual households. It does affect how the distribution of tax revenues occurs between local taxing units, school corporation, township, county, and then the local municipal government. Do recognize the challenges you acknowledged there, and we take those seriously as well. And so I think it's key to note that this doesn't result in that concern. It doesn't raise the impact on that individual household. One of the other pieces in the background of this, that this is some of what, what I wasn't confident enough to share in the moment, but I want to now in a public setting, is that last year, the city did actually cede back to the county a portion of our ceded shares, our income tax shares, so that we could make sure that the 911 fund and Public Safety Combined Dispatch remained in the black for funding for the near future without causing an increase on income taxes. And so I think it's important for that to be a matter of public record of collaboration between the city and county to avoid the very thing you're concerned about in your, at the heart of your statement. And then finally, I do appreciate what you shared about there not being a reading ahead of the public hearing and the, the benefit for you as a member of the, the gallery to have a better sense of what was coming up ahead on the agenda. So yeah, with that, are, are there any additional comments or questions from council members? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Shoda. Next item on the agenda, under old business, we have second and final reading of ordinance four C24, their motion to open discussion and consideration on second and final reading.
So moved.
Sole move.
Second.
Motion and second. Christie?
Ordinance 4C24, this ordinance, if adopted, would vacate a 15-foot platysment located on lots 2 and 3 in Bowen Professional Park, 2871 North Park Avenue within the city of Huntington.
Director Keppler here.
Yes, so just to follow up, second reading on this vacation ordinance. And Mr. Fawcett's here from the bank. As the petitioner, if there's any questions that anyone from council has, I'm happy to answer those. If not, and assuming council acts favorably, the next step would be Christie would record the final vacation ordinance in the office of the county recorder, and it will become of record, it'll be attached to that particular plat, and that easement will go away. So I have nothing more to add unless you've got questions of me. You're new, if you want me to back up, I certainly can. I'm sorry, I didn't.
I was at the previous meeting, so.
Okay, that's right.
I saw that, heard the discussion and saw the map.
Sorry, I didn't.
Question or discussion by council members regarding second and final reading of ordinance 4C24? Okay, not hearing any, we'll call the question in favor of adoption on second and final reading of ordinance 4C24. Christie?
Johnson.
Yes.
Brenzberger.
Abstain.
Rodigam.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Felton.
Yes.
Funk.
I'm just going to hang out.
Thank you. And as Director Keppler implied, the next item on the agenda will be for his presentation as well. We have first reading of ordinance 5C24, is there a motion to bring to the floor for consideration?
Sole move.
Their second.
Second.
Motion and second. Christie?
Ordinance 5C24, this ordinance, if adopted, would amend the official zoning map of the city of Huntington by partially changing the zoning of specified parcel of real estate located north of Webster Street, east of White Stein Street, south of Norfolk Southern Railroad, and west of Lee Street from R2 Residential to B2 Mixed Use.
Director Keppler here.
Yeah, I apologize if council would indulge me there in the synopsis. If we could amend the ordinance to not say parenthetical mixed use at the end, but business, my mistake from copying that over. Before you tonight is a request to rezone the western part of the parcel that's highlighted there. It's the western part of the entirety of the parcel. It's been split zoned as a result of combining multiple parcels of real estate into one. And so the applicant who's with us tonight and is happy to address any questions that you may have, if you have of him, the property on the western part is zoned R2 Residential, has been historically since the 70s. And so a number of commercial uses have operated historically from that side or portions of that site, you know, some on the commercially zoned and some on the residentially zoned. And so what the applicant seeks to do tonight is to bring them all together under one harmonious zone, and that would be B2 Business, the most diversified commercial land use designation that the city has. And so there, we did have the plan commission meeting and the public hearing. There were no neighbors that showed up or any other interested parties other than the petitioner. And so count or plan commission ultimately, as Dave indicated earlier in the meeting, gave a favorable recommendation unanimous among the plan commission recommending that you do adopt and change the zoning of the property.
Questions or discussion, council members?
Yes, the middle B2 section, just because there's so many bad, we don't have good ways to communicate in this town anymore. We don't have the Herald Press, all we have is the tab, that's once a week, and a lot of people don't get on the website of the city. So communication is not always great for some of the public meetings. Has anybody actually went to those three houses that they want to be business now and talked to them about this?
So I'll do you one better. The plan commission's rules of procedure require three different ways of notice. One, publication in the newspaper, that's by statute under law.
Okay.
As you indicated, that process has its own problems, right? With the decline in readership. Two, neighbor notices are sent from the city to adjoining property owners within a certain geographical distance of the property, depending on whether it's a plan commission request, a BZA request, those sort of things. So yes, all of those neighbors and more all received individual mailings from the city. Third, and the final way that we provide notice is no less than 10 days before the public hearing at the plan commission or the BZA, the applicant's required to post a yellow zoning sign on the property. And then that lets people who maybe haven't checked their mail see it. And so for those three ways, we go above and beyond the statutory minimums of notice, and I feel we do a pretty decent job of letting folks know.
But no one's really went to the houses and asked the people in person?
No.
Because that's not, I mean, it's not your, you don't have to, I get that.
Yeah, that...
But I would just, I mean, we had the thing last year where the one guy, we were, he was right on the edge of the apartments.
Well, that was an annexation, so there's a different notification. I understand what you're saying, I'm just clarifying.
I just want to make sure we talk to people that are actually going to be affected by it. I mean, that's all I'm trying to do.
Yeah, I get that. I'm just saying, I, we don't have the resources to knock on doors every, sometimes we have six sockets at a plan commission meeting or a BZA meeting, and, you know, the notification area, depending on the size of the parcel, could be quite onerous, right? And then when am I going to go knock on doors? Between 8:00 and 4:30, where do you think most of those people are?
So Bren, to that, sorry, Dave, go ahead.
I'd like to talk about that. I own a property straight across railroad tracks. These people have done an absolute phenomenal job cleaning up that end of town after, I mean, it was, it was, it's just been a mess since I was on council back in the 70s. We was, this spot, you know, here, there. They cleaned everything up, the property looks beautiful, neighbors, I'm sure, are elated. There was no backlash at all from anybody. I'm sure they were all tickled at it. They've done a phenomenal job of cleaning it up.
So if this is done, how will that affect the three houses that are in that zone? They can start a business if they want to, they, will it, is there a, is that driveway coming through where it says Lee?
So Lee Street, by action of council, was vacated down to 16 feet in width in the 90.
Okay.
And so everything east of Lee Street is already zoned B2 Business, so the structure that's there and half of the property, give or take, is already zoned B2 Business. I can pull that up if you...
Yeah, that's one of the points in the exhibit to clarify, Bren. The parcel in question is only the blue highlighted parcel that would have a change of status. All the remaining parcels are already currently zoned. So those three houses in specific, or you're specifically referring to, are actually already in that zone in classification.
Sorry. So right now, as the exhibit on the screen now is outlined, is the entirety of the lot. So you'll see, Todd, that basically everything east Lee Street, original non-vacated Lee Street, everything east is zoned B2. So this is the portion of property that's being requested, the western portion of the real estate to go B2.
I apologize, that's not how I read it.
I was confused initially, too.
I'm just like, hey, do they want this red part to be that now and this was this before?
Yeah, I'm sorry, that's just the way that the exhibit goes. I mean, I tried to clarify it in an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the city of Huntington, the western portion of 351, so.
Well, David, don't matter, they're already B2, buddy.
There was nothing they could do with that property anyway. I mean, it was right there on the railroad tracks.
So yeah, that was one of the things that I went over in the staff report is, you know, there was some debate in back and forth in writing the staff report as to the impacts of a commercial operation there, but then even if it maintained residential, the likelihood that anyone would use or develop it for residential purposes and the reality that it adjoins directly to the railroad tracks. Now granted, there are houses that are adjacent to the railroad tracks, and as I said in the staff report, if you live in Huntington, you can hear the trains no matter how close to the railroad tracks you live, right?
Okay, that takes all my questions away, I'm good.
That was easy.
Yes, for you guys, I did that.
Further questions or discussion of the matter?
So again, I would ask council to indulge in amending the ordinance in the synopsis there to change that mixed use into business, just to correct my clerical error.
There a motion from a council member to amend the parenthetical mixed use in the final line of the synopsis to business?
Sole move.
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion and consideration of the proposed amendment? Not hearing any at this time, we'll call the question in favor of the amendment. Christie?
Brenzberger.
Yes.
Rodigam.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Felton.
Yes.
Funk.
Yeah.
Johnson.
Yes.
Thank you. And then returning to the ordinance at hand, further discussion and consideration of the ordinance by council members? I know that we do have the owner here with us, and so I do want to offer you, if you'd like the chance to address council prior to the vote, you're welcome to step up to the podium, state your name and address, and have two minutes to share your thoughts with council.
Thank you. My name's Jerry Bushy. I bought the property, and like Dave explained, I painted it, we put a new roof on it, we cleaned up, it was used by McGuff Roofing for years, like a junkyard, old fence, cleaned it up, new stone, there will be a new fence put up. And the guy that's going to rent it is a directional boring guy at CCT out of Indianapolis, looking to locate out here. He's going to run a normal day business out of it, work in the shop, and hopefully grow his business up in this community. I think it's good for the community.
Thank you for your improvements to the property itself. Appreciate it. Council members, any questions for the owner?
No, but thank you for this, and I apologize for the confusion, so. I was trying to block you.
All right, not hearing any further question or discussion, we'll call the question in favor of approval of first reading of ordinance 5C24.
Rodigam.
Yes.
Chapman.
Yes.
Felton.
Yes.
Funk.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Brenzberger.
Yes.
Thank you, and recognizing that the matter is not time-sensitive, it will be on the agenda for council's second and final reading and formal approval at the next meeting. So thank you for attending this evening, and thank you for your work on the property. Not aware of anything under miscellaneous except for the monthly budget reports. Christie?
We're finished the first quarter of the year. The fund report is in good shape, and I have given you the budget report and the ceded report for the month. It has the new ceded numbers from the new plan, starting 2024 to 2028. And if you have any specific questions on how the reports look, give me a call, but everything's in good order. Thank you.
Any questions for Christie regarding the financials? Not hearing any at this time, is there a motion for adjournment?
Sole move.
Second.
Motion and second, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, have a good evening.
Aye.
Drive safe, Charlie.